Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'll call this meeting of the Woodford County Fiscal Court to order. Madam Treasurer, would you please call the road?
For Taylor.
Here.
For Sustree.
Here.
For Warner.
Here.
For Carl.
Here.
For Dammie.
Here.
For Latra. For Gil.
Here.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Treasurer. Offering our invocation this evening is Tony Harden from Journey Church.
Thank you. Shall we pray? Heavenly Father, tonight, I think I'm comfortable in speaking for everyone here when I say that I'm so thankful to be placed in such a beautiful county like Woodford County. And tonight, Lord, I just want to pray that in this divided world that we live in, that our community would be unified in a way that would bring you honor and glory. God, I pray a special blessing on these men and women who have been called to lead. I pray that you would guide them and that the work they do this evening would be pleasing to you. Lord, tonight, we offer our prayers in the name of your Son and my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Harden. We appreciate that. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we move on to public comment, we have a good-of-the-county program this evening for the good of the county, the greatest county in all of the multiverse, I'm told. Woodford County, your county, our county, and the county of a great Woodford Countyan, Mr. J. Henry Duncan. Tonight, tonight, we honor J. Henry Duncan, just as we did his counterpart, Mr. Ken Morales, for his loyal, dedicated, and competent service to our community in Woodford County on the Board of Elections. And J. Henry Duncan, Henry as everyone fondly knows him, not only served our country, but he serves our community, and he's done so faithfully and diligently and going to leave big shoes to fill. But no one has worked closer with J. Henry Duncan than our county clerk, Madam Clerk Sandy Jones, so I would invite Sandy Jones to the podium as we honor and recognize Henry Duncan as he retires from the Woodford County Board of Elections.
Good evening. First of all, I would like to name the members who serve on the Woodford County Board of Elections and state the duties that they were responsible for while serving in this capacity. The County Board of Elections consists of four members. A Democratic member appointed by the State Board of Elections as defined in KRS 118.015. That member is Henry Duncan, and he has been a member of this Board of Elections since June of 2016. The Republican member appointed by the State Board of Elections is Nick Nash, and he was appointed in June of 2023. And the other members are Johnny Willhite, Woodford County Sheriff, and myself, County Clerk, and I serve as the Chair on the Board. With the election process being in the headlines over the past several years, I'm glad to have this opportunity to make a public statement about what the general duties are and what they consist of as far as how they serve us each and every election. They administer election laws at the direction under the supervision of the State Board of Elections. They vote to establish election plans for the county. They vote to approve precinct boundaries. They assist in selecting precinct election officers. They provide written notice to each precinct election officer of his or her appointment. They assist in counting absentee mail-in ballots. They assist in monitoring, administering, and certifying elections at the county level. They request assistance from law enforcement officers on Election Day. And the duties do go on. This evening, I'm charged with the task of finalizing the retirement of one of our County Board of Election members, our Democratic Representative, Henry Duncan, who has served this county for nine years, has served to the end of his term and is resigning from his post today. It has been my honor and pleasure to work beside Henry Duncan, and I'm most appreciative for his years of always being that experienced, level-headed voice. Over these past years, we've seen many changes happen with our election process. He served as a precinct election officer for several years before becoming a member of this board, so he's probably seen even more changes than I have over the years. Most memorable is how we went through the pandemic emergency order election process together that tested all of us every step of the way. What I'm most proud of with this dedicated, competent Board of Elections is that we are all able to work together and administer a fair and equitable election, every election. Most importantly, no decision has ever been made that was party-driven. We form a cohesive workforce that makes decisions about the election process, voting plans, boundary changes, and other issues too numerous to name that take place on the day of an election. All these decisions are made for the best interest of every resident of Woodford County, no matter what party they are registered. Now, for the presentation portion, proclamations are issued from the Judge Executive's Office, and Kristin Bailey, intern for James Kay, wrote this proclamation, and I'd like to read it to you. Woodford County, Kentucky, recognition of service for Henry Duncan. Whereas Henry Duncan has dedicated much of his life to bettering the Commonwealth of Kentucky by supporting, empowering, and serving Kentucky residents through his political advocacy and work through the Woodford County Board of Elections. As a Kentuckian, Mr. Duncan is passionate and driven to make our community and state a more prosperous place and, whereas, Mr. Duncan began his work with the Woodford County Board of Elections on June 29, 2016, serving the Democratic Party with integrity and honor. Mr. Duncan's work ensured that all election processes ran smoothly and lawfully. He worked to ensure that all election laws were maintained and advocated to work on election registrations. Mr. Duncan worked alongside the Woodford County Clerk's Office to handle sensitive election materials and maintain respect and integrity in polling locations and, whereas, Mr. Duncan has selflessly devoted his career to service and helping those in his community. He is a retired military officer, worked in conservation for the University of Kentucky and the State of Kentucky. In addition to his vast career accomplishments, he is a faithful husband of 63 years to Nancy Duncan and is an inspiring father to his children and, whereas, as Mr. Duncan retires from serving the Woodford County Board of Elections, we extend our deepest gratitude for his time of nine years, outstanding years of service. His contributions have left a lasting impact on our community, and his legacy will continue to inspire those who follow in his footsteps. Therefore, I, Judge James Kay, do hereby recognize the great service of Henry Duncan and recognize his outstanding service and urge all citizens to join in celebration of his service. Mr. Duncan's commitment to excellence has inspired all of us and will be remembered for many years to come. And witness whereof, signed and noted, on this eighth day of July in the year of our Lord, 2025, signed, James Kay, Judge Executive, Woodford County. Would you like to make this presentation?
I couldn't have read it or said it better, Madam Clerk. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Henry Duncan. Congrats, Henry. Congrats. Here, let's turn towards Kristin there. You know, in the family, you all come up. When, I'd like to note when Sandy read or said about Henry's level-headed decisions, Nancy had a face that she made that I thought was priceless. You all come on out.
Question that, Sandy.
Everybody just move a little bit this way. Get up.
The county attorney and myself would like you, Henry, to have the podium and the mic to say a few words.
Did my wife give you permission to say that?
No, you earned it.
The, I was so pleased when Chairman of the Woodford County Democratic Party, James Kay, asked me if I would be one of the candidates for the Board of Elections. He sent three or four names over by law, and I was so pleased to be selected. I always liked politics. My dad ran for magistrate years ago and had me campaigning for him. We lost. So I said, I never want to run because I don't want to take the chance of losing. So, but the Board of Elections has been such a wonderful opportunity. The attorney back here, I don't think, I don't think you, Alan, I don't think your name was mentioned, but you've been a backbone to this Board of Elections. Sandy, I think you'll agree, where is Sandy?
Yes, absolutely.
You'll agree that we've had a lot of lawsuits from people all across the world. And we called on Alan to come and give us support. And James Fugit over there, he stepped in in the Sheriff's Department to represent the sheriff on the Board of Elections. So it's, it's been a real opportunity to get to meet a lot of people and learn a lot about, about, about what's going on in the election process. And Nick Nash back here, he's, he's always a challenge.
Let's put him in nicely.
He and I get along fine, but we don't always agree on everything. But that's what the Board of Elections is about. And I will say this, Sandy has trained all of us and all of the poll workers to say, when you go on another election day, everybody's nonpartisan. I don't think the people that are voting even knows who we are for, and they shouldn't, because that's, that's just the way it is. And I would like to share a letter here, excerpts of a letter that epitomizes Sandy. And I would like to say this also, Lloyd Jones is a backbone supporter of Sandy and also the staff. When we have elections, the whole week of elections, that staff goes 110%. She and Sandy, they and Sandy give it all. The Attorney General Coleman, Russell Coleman, announced today that in a letter to the Kentucky State Board of Elections, General Coleman shared that no credible election law violations were found during the inquiries and conduction by detectives from the Attorney General's Office. Kentuckians can be confident, our Commonwealth elections are free, fair, and secure. After independent and thorough inquiries, we found no credible instances of election law violations, said Attorney General Coleman. I'd like to thank all of the county clerks, the poll workers, and volunteers who made it possible for Kentuckians to exercise one of the most fundamental rights. Thank you, Sandy, for setting such high standards that we followed through. Thank you.
Thank you, Henry. And you are more than welcome to stay, but you're also more than welcome to be excused as well. I would open up the floor for any member of the fiscal court to share words about Mr. Duncan before he leaves. Squire Taylor?
Well, I just want to thank him for his service, not only to the Board of Elections but our community. You all are an incredible family of representation of public service, and your legacy is incredible to think about what you all have done for our community, and this is just a small piece of that. So thank you for your service then and always. Thank you. Squire Varner?
Thank you, sir. Mr. Duncan, thank you very much for your service, and always a joy to meet you and speak with you. Always had a great conversation. We're neighbors.
You're the farming neighbor.
Thank you.
And I would like to say that Ms. Carl, it's so good to see you and our condolences with you and your husband, one of the most cherished friends of our family.
Absolutely, and thank you, and thank you for your service and your family. All of you have contributed so much to this community, and that's what it's about, creating these legacies, and we can go on. But thank you.
Amen. Well said. Thank you all. Thank you. Yes, Mr. County Attorney, sir?
Henry, first of all, thank you for your kind words. One thing, one word I will use to describe Mr. Duncan on that board is indefatigable. There are few people that, I mean, I'm looking at my watch, it's about 10 o'clock at night on election night or primary night. Henry would be content to be there till two or three in the morning. I see you nodding, Nick. And, and he stayed that way. He was that way at the start, and he never melded in. He was all that way all the way through the last election. And we appreciate your service, Henry. This isn't about serving a party, this is about serving the county, and you did it admirably. And I just want you to know how much I appreciated the opportunity to work with you for these many years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney. Thank you again. Thank you all. All right. Anybody wishing to make a public comment? The floor is open. Seeing none, we'll move on to the approval of the minutes of our last meeting. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions regarding the minutes of our last meeting? Seeing none, is there, are there any objections to approving saying? Seeing no objections to approving the minutes, I will approve them without objection. Moving on to our reports, our Treasurer has no report tonight due to our year-end reporting, and she's serving as our clerk tonight, which we really appreciate you doing that. Ken, you want to entertain a motion to accept the year-end financial reports? Is there a motion for saying? Motion, Squire Brown. Second, Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We have a couple items from the Road Department that I'm gonna handle for our Road Department. We need to advertise the bid process for the paving on Old Clifton Road using FD 39 funds. Again, this, this road is one that was inundated and flooded. It needed repair prior to that, and it definitely needs repair now, so we need to make that motion.
Motion.
Squire Gentry. Second, Squire Brown. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And all those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. We also have some really great news for the county, in District 1 in particular, that we were awarded the $1.1 million for the Paines Depot Bridge project through the County Bridge Improvement Program. I'd really like to thank Gail Smith and Bo Wilson and the Road Department for their diligence in working through that process. I'd also like to give a big shout out to the Fiscal Court for the forethought and the diligence in completing the work that we needed to be grant-ready and ready for those funds to be applied. So I need a motion to approve the agreement between the Commonwealth of Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, Department of Rural and Municipal Aid, and the Woodford County Fiscal Court for FD 15 funds in the amount of $1,110,877 for the replacement of the Paines Depot Bridge.
Motion.
Motion, Squire Taylor. Second, Squire Carl. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay, and that motion carries. We also need to adopt the Resolution 25-06, approving the MOA for the FD 59 funds for the the Paines Depot Bridge project. Squire Taylor?
Motion.
Second.
Squire Gentry is second. Are there any questions on adopting the resolution to approve saying? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. And the motion carries unanimously. Are there any other departments or agencies that have any reports for the court? I would note that Director Steve Hunter of Planning and Zoning has given the revised agenda for the regular meeting, July 10th, this Thursday at 6:30 p.m. It's got some significant items on it. Director Hunter, would you like to present?
It'll be upstairs.
It'll be upstairs in the Circuit courtroom on the third floor. And Director Hunter is gonna be around for our proposed zoning amendment of 197 Browns Mill Road to come forthwith. Any other departments or agencies have any reports for the court? Seeing none, we'll move on to the claims, the bills to be paid by the county are before you. Are there any questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid?
I have one question.
Yes.
This might be for Rick. I know we approved an ice maker a little while back, and I see we have another ice maker on the bill list. I just want to see what happened there.
One was for the Road Department. We got that in. The time we got it installed, it's all chining. So we're trying in the process to get it working. That's one we bought. We also want one for here. Freeman may wind up with an ice maker EMS, and we may wind up getting this one to work and use it downstairs.
Okay, you're not returning it, you're gonna see if you can get it to work?
We passed that window, and that's the only thing that I dislike about Amazon. You get sometimes a decent deal, and sometimes you get bad deals. But we missed our window of return.
Other questions or comments on any of the bills to be paid? Are there any objections to any of the bills to be paid? Seeing no objection thereon, I will approve the bills to be paid without objection. We need to approve the transfers. Is there a motion for saying?
Motion.
Motion, Squire Carl. Second, Squire Gill. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Is there a motion to approve the personnel order? Motion, Squire Gentry. Second, Squire Varner. Are there any questions thereon? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Personnel order is approved as presented. Moving on to new business, the aforementioned proposed zoning map amendment for 197 Browns Mill Road. We do have Director Hunter here for any questions, but the necessary action for this evening would be to direct the county attorney to draft the ordinance for proposed zoning map amendment. Sea Island Soil Company LLC, 197 Browns Mill Road, R1B, to an A1 district.
And Judge, may I interject?
Yes, Mr. County Attorney.
That doesn't mean you're voting for it, but so the process can move along, for those who may be interested in approving the zone change, to simply direct me to have it for a potential first reading next meeting rather than debate it tonight. So you may ultimately be opposed to it, but this would just have it for you to consider at your next meeting for a potential first reading.
Make that motion.
There's a motion?
Second.
Second. Motion and second on the table. Open up the floor for any discussions or questions thereon. Seeing none, I would just say that if you have questions about this specific potential drafted ordinance or the zoning map amendment, to get with Director Hunter anytime. There's a motion on the table, is there any further discussion?
I just want to thank the Director Hunter for communicating with me with a couple questions I had. So appreciate his availability.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Seeing no other further discussion, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion too carries unanimously.
Judge, I'll have that for the court for the next meeting.
Thank you, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you, Judge.
Now, we need to approve the Order of Allowance for the Board of Assessment Appeals as presented. Is there a motion to that effect? Motion, Squire Gentry. Second, Squire Downey. Are there any questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. The wise lease is up for renewal. The recommendation would be for the fiscal court to approve the lease under the same or similar terms for a one-year extension, contingent upon the final review and approval of the county attorney and myself. Is there a motion along those lines? Motion, Squire Gill. Second, Squire Blackford. Are there any questions or comments? Squire Taylor?
Judge, I just wanted to note, I have a relationship with one of the board members on license, so I'm gonna abstain.
So let that be noted, Madam Clerk. Seeing no other further discussion, abstention noted. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries. Moving on to the Sheriff's Quarterly Report, we need to approve the Sheriff's Quarter-end Report for the quarter ending June 30, 2025. Motion, Squire Gill. Second, Squire Carl. All those in favor, please vote and signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. That motion carries unanimously. Madam Treasurer, are there any items that we have overlooked or need to address? Seeing none, then we will move on to announcements. I'll start out with Squire Downey.
The only thing, Judge, was just to thank all of our courthouse staff and volunteers and everyone for a successful 4th of July, both with our downtown parade and the county fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you. Squire Blackford, thank you, thank you. Squire Gill?
I have nothing, thanks.
You're welcome. Squire Brown, sir. Thank you. Squire Taylor?
I want to echo Squire Downey's comments that we're very successful 4th of July, really excited to have the parade back, appreciate the city for sales on that, and really appreciate everybody's hard work on a very successful fireworks at the county park. I even liked the change of the vendor locations and things this year, it was a really great event. And one other element is I wanted to wish Mr. County Attorney a very happy birthday.
Thank you, Squire Taylor. Squire Gentry?
Nothing, thank you.
Squire Varner, sir.
Thank you, Judge. Just wanted to remind everybody, the Woodford County Farmers Market this Saturday, corn's coming in, vegetables are coming in, so get out and take a look, because they've been getting a lot of folks in and vegetables coming in. Also, I want to say happy birthday to Alan.
Thank you, Squire Varner. Squire Carl?
Yes, and happy birthday, Alan. I mean, 40 and holding, buddy, right? I hear you. And I just want to say to the community and everyone that the texts and phone calls and cards and meals, and I just cannot thank everyone enough at this time. And my family, we appreciate it. We appreciate you all, and keep us in your thoughts and prayers. We need it, but again, thank you.
Thank you, Squire Carl. Our love and prayers are with you. Mr. County Attorney, sir.
Judge, as Melody reminded us, we do need to have our financial disclosure forms filed. I know that June 30th date slips up, and don't think about that, but if you haven't done that, like some of us haven't, probably because we turned 70 and have gotten old and forgetful, you need to get that done. And thank those of you for your kind wishes, I appreciate that very much. And as I told the judge, there's no place I'd rather be on a birthday such as the 70th than at a fiscal court meeting. So my dream came true, so thank you all again.
Mr. County Attorney, can I ask, because I heard this, how many fiscal court meetings do you estimate you've attended in your career so far? And that's just regular meetings?
About 1,050. But fortunately, July 8th has only fallen on a Tuesday, I think, about five times. But I think the total in 43 years and nine months is about 1,050. That's a lot. So I am that old, yes.
Excellent work, Mr. County Attorney.
Thank you.
Youthful at 70. And that's our county seal. Today, it's our birthday seal. Woodford Sun, anything?
Well, for those of you who don't subscribe, you should go out and get this week's paper off the press Thursday morning, because if you're like me and you somehow missed reading the Woodford Sun 10 years ago this week, you probably are not aware of the details of a criminal action that Mr. George faced and pled guilty to that was fully reported on his 60th birthday. And that was even being represented by retired Kentucky Corn and Pills Judge Anthony Wilkins. All the details will be in the sun in 10 years ago. I understand the Kentucky Bar Association is acting on my delayed information to them too. Hal may not be the county attorney next month.
Always, always on the investigative reporting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I'm cutting out your news in Woodford County.
Amen, here, here. So I would agree with the estimation that the 4th of July celebration in the community was very well-received, very well-attended, thousands between the parade and the fireworks, and it was a big, big time. Thanks to everybody, especially Rick Wade and team, who had the courthouse looking good. Other than that, I want to wish our county attorney a very happy birthday. Thank you all for being here. Thank you, Madam Clerk, for that recognition of Henry Duncan. If there's nothing else to come before this honorable court on this early evening, we shall adjourn. God bless you, and God bless Woodford County.